Need to be nervous. Good evening and welcome to Porch Time with your host Kevin Coriel, live from JTH Construction Studio. And we have a room full of people. We've got Cory back here hiding. I don't know if you, there he is, you can see him, so. Lot of folks online tonight. I knew this would be a big topic. Um, we have three fabulous guests in studio and I got one of them already running away from the camera. She said she just thinks camera shy. We're not gonna let her do that, so. Let me say hi to chat real quick if I can find my mouse. There we go. Hello Samantha, hello Michael, Mac, Darlene, Leslie, Geneva. There's the boss Bethany, Julie Sheets Reeves, how are you dear? Can't wait to hear from Deckard Hankins and Stags. Just a second, I gotta do this or the boss will yell at me. Real quick, I'd like to say thank you to sponsors, especially JTH Construction. This place is magnificent. We're gonna keep building on it as we go. A lot of things we're gonna do out of this room. And Cory and I just love it. Everybody, the whole crew was in here a couple nights ago and hats off to Joe and his guys. Thank you so much, Mr. Hankins. American Basement Solutions Larry Ralph Senior, thank you so much. If you guys have any basement or crawl space needs, contact American Basement Solutions. Trapper Tim's Nuisance Wildlife Removal. He wasn't a sponsor before I had a bat. It's almost like I let the bat go and then he became a sponsor. So heck of a deal. Thank you, Tim. And of course Larry, Blanden Boys Lawn Care, they do more than cut grass. They clean your garage out. They bush hog. They do a lot of stuff. You need yard maintenance, get ahold of Larry. Just Wingin' It for all your Porch Time apparel and lots of other things. She does a lot of fabulous things for shirts, hats and artisan wear, any, any team in the county. Reps Fitness, Cory, how's it going over at Reps Fitness? Great, Reps Fitness. So I need to get back in there. And other than that, we're sponsored caught up, so they can't yell at me now. Couple announcements real quick before I get to our guest. We are having a chili cook-off. Um, this is for the baby box, Martinsville Safe Haven Baby Box, Sunday, October 18th, 1 to 4 p.m. at Gather Round BBQ. This is put on by Gather Round BBQ and Porch Time. Uh, Sunday, October 18th, 1 to 4 p.m. I have outstanding chili. I already know that. Y'all are playing for second. Kevin Green's gonna come up with some beef tips or pork tips in his chili. Whatever, doesn't matter a bit. You wanna, if you wanna enter chili, get ahold of me. It's gonna be 10 bucks to get in. 10 bucks to get in, to get 10 samples. You guys are gonna be the ones to uh, um, sample the chili and tell us who has the best one. There's gonna be more chili than 10 there. I've already got like 15 people interested, so. If you want in, let me know. We will be there 1 to 4. We hope you guys can show up. Yeah, it's a little tight in there. Is she yelling? Wow, she's a stickler. Real quick, yesterday we did the Trump parade and we're not going political like that tonight, but 8:30 yesterday morning I get a call because we're supposed to be there at 8. Yesterday's the only morning I get to sleep in like in weeks. Are you gonna be there by 9? And, cause Beth is normally, you know, smooth. She's not very high, not very low. She stays, right? 8:30 she's yelling at me. At 10 till 9 she's yelling at me. Are you gonna make it there or not? I'm like, we're gonna get there. So for the next two hours, she was fired up, but. And I'm normally the one panicking and she's normally here, but yesterday was the complete opposite. Anyway, we're honored to have as our really first guest in the new studio, three candidates for school board for Martinsville School System. Jackie Deckard, Mr. Matt Hankins and Heather Stags. How are we doing tonight, folks?
Wonderful.
Thank you for having us, Kevin.
I know you guys are lying because you guys are nervous and the whole thing.
We are. You're making us feel comfortable.
Yeah, I like to talk, so.
I have known all three of you a very long time. Um, you guys are from the area. You've been in the school corporation for a very long time and we're gonna hit on that individually, but um. I want to tell you guys thank you for coming in because I know this is out of your realm for a lot of you guys. Your educators, your teachers, you can talk to students, talking in front of a mic and a camera with. Could be 5,000 people view it by the end of the week or more. I know it's a little nerve wracking, but be yourselves. That's one reason why I appreciate you guys running. I think we need wholesale changes. This is a wholesale change. But with that, you guys have fans all over the place, all over the board here, so. Mr. Deckard says he wishes he could get sound. Glenda says hello. So. Well, you, you got sound CB? Okay. Phil, I'm sorry, that's on your end.
I can say it maybe air on his part.
Operator. We were not gonna say that very loud though. Let's, let's start with Heather. She's immediate to my left. Heather, how long have you been in, in the school corporation or been involved with school in this area? And also, what made you want to do this? Because as I said pre-show, you gods are crazy. I would never run for political position.
Well, we, um, my husband and I have lifelong residence in Martinsville. So we do have a real passion for our community. We always joke, we tried to leave there for a few years and we came right back. So this is our home. It means a lot. We've had a student in the district since I think 1998 continuously, since 1998. So we've been at all the schools for many years now. Husband's an educator. I worked for the central office for about 17 years. I've been out of there for almost five now. My husband, my kids and I, we always have strived to act to our community, to our, to our school district, to our community. And with this election, it was the first time. You can't run if you are employed by the district. So this is the first time that I have been able to run. I'm not employed anymore. And I miss the district. I want to be part of it still.
Well, we appreciate that decision and glad, I, I've known your husband even longer than you guys, so we, we go way back and I thank you for doing that. Thank you guys for coming back home. Um, it means a lot to a lot of the residents that have been here a very long time.
Thank you. We love it here.
You're welcome. Jackie Deckard, of all the people that understands political, I mean, you, you, there's a history of Deckards that have taken the beatings.
Think I'd know better, right Kevin? I know. And you know Kevin, same, same with Heather. We're lifelong residents, Phil, uh, my husband and I of Martinsville. It's my community. It's my hometown. I love it. Um, along with Heather, I worked at this district for 15 and a half years and I can honestly say I loved every minute, um, that I, that I worked here. And I still help this corporation a lot behind the scenes in ways that most will never know. Um, but I was gonna run four years ago, to be perfectly honest, and there, I had some friends running in the same district. And you know how that happens, that splits votes. And you know, I didn't want to do that, so. Um, I waited when this seat came available. It was up for reelection this year, then I decided to run. So we still have grandsons in the corporation. We have great nieces and nephews. My husband's still a teacher here, 18 years. So I have a vested interest. Um, not just, you know, running to be running. I have a vested interest and.
That's a recurring theme with the three of you and I was gonna get to that a little later, but yeah. All three of you, deep ties.
Deep rooted, right here in this community. So, so um, I miss it and I miss, you know, a lot of the people are still here that I worked with for 15 and a half years. Um, I still see those people. It's still my community. I still shop here, still live here. Um, I just don't happen to work here any longer, so. Gonna want to give back to the school corporation.
That's fantastic and thank you. And thank your whole family because junior, senior and many others involved, not only with political, but the school corporation, everything. You guys are deeply vested in this community and it shows and a lot of passion there. Mr. Hankins?
Yes.
I think you've taught just about everybody in the county. I'm just, just throwing that out there.
Getting, yeah, I'm getting around now since I'm now at Monrovia, so. But uh, yeah, I've really wanted to give back to the community of Martinsville. I. I want to see it back the way it used to be where people were from Martinsville who came here. They taught, they raised their children here and you know, that's the way it used to be and I want to see that return to the way it was.
Right. I, I, I think that's, that's a lot of what I'm hearing out in the community. Um, and I'll just throw this out there. I have no ties to school corporation anymore. My kids have moved on. I've got two in college and one working and so, other than some other family members directly, I have no ties. So I could say, I don't, I don't care what happens. But this is my community. And when I see the disconnect between not only the high school. But the school board superintendent and the, and the high school itself from the community, that bothers me. And it's not on a personal level, it's on a community level. And there's, in my opinion, that, that has to change and to me, I don't know. I, I, I know there's numbers going around about kids leaving. You, you see it. And, and I know, we talk about this on our, on air all the time and then that bothers me and I know it bothers y'all.
It bothers me a lot, Kevin, which is one of the driving factors of why I'm running this year, you know, because just to sit back and watch the declining enrollment and, and as Matt mentioned, some of the things that we've had in the past that we don't have any longer. That breaks my heart, honestly. And um, I want to address this while we're talking about the numbers. In the last several days, um, you know, I've seen some things and heard comments about possibly figures not being accurate that's thrown out there and politically, you know, motivated. Um, and I want to state right here and now, anything that I post on my Facebook page is accurate. It's accurate data coming directly from the Department of Education. It's not made up figures. It is, it's data. So, um, and I want to talk maybe just a minute about how that data gets to the Department of Education. So my role for almost 21 years has been in state reporting. So each school corporation on membership count day, which is in September and February. The, each corporation submits data to the Department of Education. So we are mandated to tell the DOE where the student should be attending school and which county do they actually live in.
Right.
So that information comes directly from reporting from each corporation. So I did post last year, not this year, last year in September of 2019, 673 students. Who were MSD of Martinsville students chose to enroll elsewhere.
We lost 600.
673 students.
Kids from our district?
Yes, sir.
Are you kidding me?
And I want to know why.
I do too.
I want to know why. So I, I did post a survey on my campaign Facebook page asking those very questions.
So when you lose that many kids, it, it's systemic from that point on because then you lose teachers. Every program you're involved with, if you've got 50, if you've got 300 kids to choose from to put 10 kids on a basketball court. Odds are you're gonna get 10 DC and I'm, I'm just taking basketball as a hypothetical. You can acquire or chess team or whatever. When your numbers are decreased that much. And this is stuff that drives a school and, and builds bonds with the community. That hurts.
Right, because you mentioned, it's a community issue. It doesn't just involve the school corporation. It involves the entire community and, and that's sad. And I want to see that change. But you have to acknowledge the issue first. You have to find out the reasons why they're leaving first before you can take corrective action.
Right, Max, Max asking are some of those being homeschooled and then 189 went to Tabernacle?
That figure does not include homeschooled students. Those are, those figures include students who have been reported elsewhere who were enrolled on count day. Homeschooled students do not get reported by each school corporation. Now, we have to report that they move to homeschool, but we don't have, those are not funded.
Those are not included.
Those are not including the funding. Those totals are only students that were funded.
Probably higher than six.
Oh, yeah. If you include homeschool.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Wow. That's, that's shocking to me.
It is shocking and I think it was shocking to many of the people who responded to it when I posted it. Anything I'm gonna post, I guarantee you is facts. It's not Jackie Deckard's thoughts.
What you posted and called you out on it. I don't, I don't know the gist of it and I'm, I'm opening wounds here, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. I mean, that's basically what it is. And so I want to set that straight. When I post figures, those are accurate coming from the Department of Education or other educational resources. Those are not made up numbers.
And I'll interject there too. Anybody can look those numbers up.
Absolutely.
Public record.
They are, yes. Indiana Department of Education, you can go to their website and pull up all of that information.
Yes, ma'am.
So clearly, if, if you told me, if you ran a business and you had a thousand employees and 660 of them left, you'd want to know something. Something's wrong.
Something's wrong.
Something's wrong.
Right.
And I mean, you have to look at the school corporation as a business and unfortunately, that, that's just the fact of it. But um. These are kids' lives we're dealing with and parents and communities and.
Absolutely.
And now we know why you three ran.
Right. Not only that, but teachers have left.
Right, the systemic issue of it. It, it clears house on everybody at that point in time.
It does. And, and like I said, it breaks my heart because I think about, you know, we've had questions this year. Um, I hope these people have been involved in the past years in school board election. Because Reporter Times and Greater Chamber of Commerce asked 15 questions. Some of them were two-parters. The Teachers Union asked us questions. I'm, I'm glad with that. I mean, I'm happy with the engagement that people have, have had this year. Um, I just don't know how much engagement they had in previous years. I can't speak for that. Um, but you know, some of the questions were those kind of things, like what would you do to change it? Well, first off, like I said, I posted a survey on my Facebook page. I got some great feedback from some community people about why they took their children elsewhere. And until we fix those kind of issues, as Matt said, we've got great teachers that are leaving and um, you know, one of the questions that the Teachers Union ask us, what do we feel like, you know, what two things would you, or you know, do you want to address? Actually, I think the reporter asked us that as well. And you know, I said student enrollment and teacher retention, the very things that we're sitting here talking about this evening.
They go hand in hand.
They go hand in hand. I mean, great teachers.
I mean, we've lost some outstanding teachers over the last five to 10 years that I can think of off the top of my head.
We just lost one last week, the high school. One of. My children, one of their favorite teachers left mid-year to go to another school district.
And that is, yeah. Why is that?
Right.
And they're devastated and that breaks my heart. Because not only do my kid, I mean, I think it's, this teacher is well-loved by many students.
Right.
Well, they, they form bonds with the students. I mean, you know, you think about the teachers with the student all day long.
Right.
And it may not be the same teacher, multiple teachers of course, at middle school and high school level and even at the elementary level now, but you know, they are with those children day in, day out. So they form, you know, personal bonds. So it is devastating. It's devastating to the corporation and to the children when great teachers leave and, and um, you know, we just, we need to figure out why. What are the reasons for that?
Well, why the exodus? Yeah. Right. Not only two students, teachers, families leaving, leaving the area.
Right.
And I, I, I know a little of it, but it's, it's out of my realm, but I have friends in different districts. All I know is Monrovia, I know people that I graduated with where their entire families are there now. And you can go down the list of Monrovia names and go, wait a minute, what if they're related and you do a research? Monrovia's loaded with former Martinsville residents and students. And so that hasn't been hap, that's been going on for some time. And that's crazy.
Yeah, and you know, um, as was mentioned in the last few days, um, was mentioned that all corporations lose students. That's not true. All corporations do not lose students. It is true that some corporations do have students that transfer to other schools. That, I mean, I think that's been gone, you know, going on for years. The fact is though, is that all of our surrounding corporations have enough students, we call them cash transfers. We don't actually charge tuition, although a school could. Um, but they come from other school corporations into your school district. Those are transfers in. Some of surrounding school corporations have enough students to offset the ones who are leaving.
Sure.
And um, when I posted about the 673, I know there were some comments that said, well, basically you're not being very transparent because I believe if you would tell the number that transferred in, that would tell the whole story. I'll give you that figure. 95 students transferred in last school year. We had 673 Martinsville students who enrolled elsewhere. We had 95 students from other corporations who enrolled here.
Wow.
That doesn't offset the deficit. And that's a fact.
This has just been shocking to you guys when, when stuff like this hits.
Yes.
You know, but this is something I think, this is a trend.
Yeah, it's been a trend.
That's been going on for years. It has to, I mean, we are, the stakes are so high right now and it has to be addressed. We can't wait any longer.
Right.
No.
I agree.
This isn't new.
I mean, at one time.
It's been happening for several years.
Yes. At, at one time I could remember thinking, you know, to myself, I wonder if we're ever be big enough to win the two high schools? Cause you could see that progressing towards that at one point in time.
Well, I mean, no, I mean, well, that would be great. But just for instance, I mean, this is our football team, I believe was 5A a few years ago.
We were 5A when I played or whatever, they topped the top level.
We were moved to 4A recently, the past couple of years. We're not 4A.
The enrollment continues to drop. We're gonna, we're gonna drop in that too. And I know a lot of people probably say, well, you don't sports. No, our, you know, our biggest concern obviously is academics for, that is top and foremost, but.
Sports drives the wagon, so to speak. And it builds bonds and it builds community bonds and, and it, your team doesn't go have to have to go out and win state every time, but when a community gets behind a team because there's. Hey, I grew up with this grandpa and I know that every community has that. For some reason, we're missing that as of late.
Yeah, and I'm getting interjected there a little bit also because, and it's not only, we love sports, obviously. But I, we were driving through the high school parking lot a couple of weeks with my kids and the band was out practicing. I pulled down my windows to listen and I thought, oh my gosh, when I was little, you would go watch the band practice.
Yes.
I can remember being little and going and watching.
And parking in your car.
Yes, and go watch the band practice. What, we need to folk, I mean, we need to pay some attention to our fine arts department. I mean, what are we doing for them as well?
Right. Band Day used to be one of the bigger days around here.
It was.
Oh, my gosh.
When the state fair was going on.
Everything shut down. Everybody went. And this was a great community. I think they, they would still rally behind.
Yeah, they did.
You know, functions and teams and whatever the clubs, whatever the, you know. Whatever the case is, so academic teams. And look, let's face it Kevin, we do a great job. Here are our decathlon team. Look how many.
Yeah, state champs or nationals.
Look at some of these other things, you know, so, you know, you don't just get number one in the state or even, you know, finalists in the state if you're not doing something right. That's a testament.
Yeah, that's not by accident.
No, that's a testament to our students.
Hell of a job with that over the decades.
Yes, he did. Guess he's good.
Oh, he had a tough time teaching me US history. He did well with that though.
We won't go into that.
Right, right.
And I think that's it. I think, you know, for us, we've all had, uh, you know, children who've grown up here and, and I want to see my grandsons and, you know, grandkids and great nieces and nephews and everyone's children experience some of those fun times and things that we've experienced in the past. And I just want them to be able to experience that. And um, so you know, what I can do, I will bring, you know, should I win? I'll bring my expertise and what I do to the board. And it may not be, you know, I think all of us have strengths in different areas and, and I think that's what makes us, um, very good at what we do.
It'd be hard, pressifying three individuals running for school board with the amount of history and knowledge that you guys have in as far as, as a corporation. Transparency, trust, transparency, trust. I, that's all I hear every time it comes up about school board. And I'm not saying we don't have that now, but in my opinion, we don't have a lot of that now. And that's where the disconnect, in any form of, you know, politics or business, when you're not transparent, the citizens notice that.
I think as a school board, I would hope, I would want, if we were elected, if I was, I would want families, staff, student, anybody to feel comfortable and confident coming to board meetings.
Right.
Speaking their mind, you know, what are your concerns? And that they would feel confident that they're gonna be heard. They will be acknowledged.
Right, acknowledged. You're right, Heather.
Because at the end of the day, I, we're all in it. We want the best school district we can. I mean, that is, at the end of the day, I think we can all agree, we want it, a good district for our kids. We want a good district for our staff and our community.
Right.
The, the school district is our largest employer in, in Martinsville and we need to take care of our people.
We need to take, and, and you know, you're right Heather. I mean, I've told my husband at home, I have a slogan, treat people right. That's really all it is, treat people right. And uh, you know, the fact is that. You know, they vote for us. They vote for the school board and I want people to have a right to speak up. And I am running on an open forum platform. I have made no bones about that.
Me too. I mean, we want people to speak their mind to us. If they vote for us, we're gonna be their, they're our constituents too. So, you know, we're representing them on the school board and we feel like that's, at least I feel that's not happening right now.
The community's at a crossroads and, and obviously things are gonna change big time around here, Tim to Stern. And hopefully, the school board's at a cross, school, school board's superintendent and the school district as a whole is at a crossroads and things are gonna change drastically. I, I, I think it could come together as a beautiful thing and it needs to happen. And you three are the tip of the spear for that because uh, once I heard you guys were running, um, Mr. Hankins, I've known you a very long time. And um, I think that you bring just.
Experience.
Knowledge and experience and you've, you've taught kids as kids as kids, I bet. You know what I mean? And you, you've connected with them through generations of families and I think that's fantastic. Uh, and I don't want to say go back, I don't want to say go back to the way it was, but um, it doesn't hurt knowing where you've been to where you're going. You know what I mean? And, and I think you three bring that with you, with your family and of course, you two's families also, it's.
It's time to be forward-thinking. We've gotta, we've gotta have some big goals right now. We've gotta have some plans. Where are we going?
Right.
You know, sometimes it seems we're just spinning our wheels a little bit, like.
Right, we don't have goals.
We all need to be on the same page. What are we working towards? What do we want our district to look like in five years, 10 years, 15 years?
Absolutely, a strategic plan. We need to have one and if we do, I've not seen it. If we do, it's not posted.
And, and your community needs to.
They need to know that.
Needs, get everybody on board.
Absolutely.
Proud of, proud of you three. Love my sister.
Um, thank you Brett.
We need Matt Heather jacket with school board.
But you're right. I mean, you know, obviously we've talked a lot about um, short-term, long-term goals. We need them. We need to be held accountable for them when we don't reach them. Um, otherwise, why are you spinning your wheels like Heather's saying? You're spinning your wheels. What are you working towards? You have to have a goal that you're working towards and if you don't reach that goal, let's figure out why we didn't reach that goal, but you have to have that to begin with. And um, that's one thing I feel like we, our strength is in, we will, we will make sure they're a goal set. And if we don't reach those goals, trust me, no one would be harder on us than we would be on ourselves, so.
There you go Megan. There are young college graduates trying to figure out where to live. I know where, I, I know very soon I'll have a couple. Those are the people you need to get off of town, the school board, we need to work together.
Yeah, I love that. Um, because this is something that we talk about around my house is. You go, you have a great experience growing up. You have a great, which a big part of that is your school district.
Right.
Right.
You want those people, after they graduate, whatever path they take, to stay in your community. Don't move, you know, we don't want them to move away. Stay here, grow our community. And the district plays a huge part in that. So I love that. I mean, young couples here, young families, that's what we want.
When young people are looking for places and Matt, they're gonna look at, you know, where I would look at is what grade, what federal grade did that school corporation get?
Sure.
Let's look at that school corporation, you know, what is the community involvement in that? That's gonna be key, I think, and.
Working in real estate all the years that I have, you'd be surprised that the amount of people that want to move into your county or move into your area, that is one of the questions you're asked.
Right.
How are the school districts?
Education and healthcare.
Oh, yeah. Right on the money. They could care about anything else. Education, healthcare. And you get a few, hey, how good's your basketball team? Well, how tall's your kid? Cause we can, we can work, we can find you a better house. No, it's easy. Um, education, healthcare. You're exactly right. And. Um, education, healthcare, you're exactly right. And healthcare is a totally different beast around here with the hospital.
Right.
We don't have anymore. But um, education is asked constantly when they're moving in from, especially larger cities. Up north or from up north or from down south, hey, what do you guys got to offer school wise? And, and Matt Lathan posted seventeen years ago, we won first in the nation in ac- academic decathlon. Good stuff.
Right.
But you never hear anything about that anymore and you, and it's just all, I don't know. Schools are a reflection of community, exactly Becky. When your school is strong, your community will be too.
Yes, absolutely Becky, I love that Becky, yes. She's so got a pulse and like, you, that's a great community member right there too, because she has a pulse on it. And, and the school district is the pulse of the community.
Yeah.
And it should be and we need to keep it that way. You know, and you know, I think I'm gonna steal from Matt, as Matt said in one of his responses to the reporter, we want to bring those artisans home.
Good answer.
And we want to bring them home here and um, we know that we're faced with other challenges here. We know that I sixty-nine, you know, has um, presented many challenges to our community. But I still feel like as a board, uh, as a school corporation, we can still work with economic development, redevelopment committee. We can work with city and county officials and come up again with a plan, a strategic plan, short-term and long-term goals of what we are trying to accomplish here.
Right.
So.
I mean, community involvement's important. I mean, when I did DECA here for years and business professionals. A lot of the community want to help the student schools.
Right.
And I still have like ten to twelve at Home Bank now. And so it's been a benefit all those years and we kept those students here. And we've got to continue that and the community here is willing to help.
Yes.
I, I've always said, if you can, if you get your commu-, I love our community and if you can get them behind you, they will fight tooth and nail for you.
Oh yeah.
Yes, they will.
They will.
That's who we are, that's Martinsville. And, but you've got to get them behind you and you've gotta be transparent. You have to all be on the same page.
Right.
Make them feel comfortable and confident in you.
Mm-hmm.
And, and they will fight tooth and nail for you.
DECA teaching, you got twenty, what'd you say, how many kids working, home egg that you touched?
I'd say probably ten to twelve.
Really? That's fantastic.
It's wonderful.
The, the term I always hear is bedroom town, but you know, we can change that. When we can put kids at a national level on the decathlon team and we've got artisans spread out across the globe, working. From brain surgeons to.
Right.
Let's, let's get some of them home.
Bring it back home.
Bring some of them home. Uh, uh, and a prime example, and I, and I'll talk good about the eighty-five artisans because Chris Sheets. Graduate, he was left guard, I was right guard, known him my entire life, we're buddies. Uh, you guys may know Julie, I don't know if you guys are familiar with her.
Just a little bit, and Chris is great.
He brought it back home and now he's got a, now he's got a business on the square.
Thank you Brian Carpenter.
He is. And he's a prime example.
Yeah.
Of what.
Yes.
He could go anywhere in the country and do what he does.
Yes, he could.
But he brought it home, he employs local people and he's adding to the community.
Exactly.
That's what we need and that's what our school board, our superintendent, our district, that's what we gotta work on. And to, to get those artisans to stay here, uh, sure, you're not gonna get them all, but if you get, if you get. I don't know, right now you're getting one out of ten, if you get four out of ten, hell, that's a win, you know, that's.
I agree.
That, that in, expand your community. Our teachers, teaching on palms and needles, be afraid of jobs, we're what? Bad management be the, must be the issue. Julie Chris Sheets is the best. I'm familiar with that guy Julie.
You're right Julie. I think Matt does bring up a, a good point, obviously, you know, uh, as I said, Phil's taught here for eighteen years, but you know, it's a, it's a culture. And, and the culture has changed, let's just face it, the culture has changed over the last six years and um. You know, as we've all stated, we want the teachers to feel comfortable if they want to bring something to us or whoever's on the board. They need to be comfortable enough that there, there's not gonna be repercussions, you know, for their ideas or for something they're upset with.
Back to transparency.
It does.
I mean, individuals can approach either one of you three, ask you anything you want, you're gonna give them as best honest answer you can.
And if we don't know it, we'll try and find out.
But to have the fortitude to say, hey, I'll, I'll answer the question. I don't have to go back and go, hey, can we talk about this?
Right.
Right.
Should we talk about this?
Yeah.
Yeah, you should, because you work for us.
That's right.
You know what I mean?
Exactly.
And the individual that you're afraid to talk of works for you. And that's what we do, we got that wrong somehow right now. We've had that wrong for about six years.
Sometimes I feel like we focus on, there's some kinds of focus on what we can't do. I think we really need to just start saying, hey, what can we do? What can we do?
You're right Heather, because just like the past, you know.
I'm gonna come from a place of yes.
Right.
I wanna.
We lost students in the past, but what are we gonna do in the future to correct that?
Rob Helms, three good, three good people, I didn't mean to interrupt, hello Emmy.
Oh hey.
He's a great god right there.
Rob my brother, Rob my brother Helms, but, but you're right Heather, I think sometime it is we focus maybe on the negative and I think. That you'll see from most of the answers that we've given and um, some of the things that we've stated on our campaign pages, we've tried to keep it positive because. That is pretty much how we are and I think we do need to focus on the future. What can we do? What can we do uh, to change? How can we help? And I think that's where we shine. Because we have a lot of experience sitting in this room. Do we know all the answers? Absolutely not, I don't profess to. But over twenty-one years, I've certainly, I've got a lot of resources, a lot of contacts.
Right.
That we can go get the answers.
Other areas.
Absolutely.
I mean, we can reach out, I mean, our school corporation should be reaching out to other school corporations. What are you doing? What's working for you guys?
Right. I mean, because uh, you know, when you have some inexperienced individuals. Whether that's ones in charge or, you know, in the individual buildings, um, there's nothing wrong with reaching out to other people who have. Have been doing this for a long time. I think you should. Because I don't think any one of us sitting in this room has all the answers and I don't think any one person on a board has all the answers. I think it takes.
It takes a diverse group of people on a board.
Right.
And if you're not willing to reach out to other people and say, hey, yeah, I'm really new with this or I really have no experience in this, what would you do in this situation?
I think even Albert Einstein had to ask questions every now and then, so, you know what I mean? Couple of things right here, Rob says, it's, it is hard to look forward when you're always looking over your shoulder, great quote, quote from a very close friend. And then I don't know, Max uh, got a question, how do you propose funding formula? Is that even in your hands or is that out of your?
Funding formula is out of our hands, we don't control that.
Right.
At all. Um, that's dictated by the state.
And we can't answer anything on referendum, who, I don't even know what our budget looks like.
No, we'd have to know our budget.
Yeah, we wouldn't have to.
Yeah.
The only thing we can also stress though is the funding with vocational programs, vocational funding does get more money.
Yes, it does.
Get students in those vocational programs.
And that's something that we've seemed to drifted away from a lot lately and then I think that shows in the communities.
It does.
That's a necessity.
Oh yeah. You know, there used to be, we used to have a little slogan here and it was always my favorite and I'll share. And it was that we just want to make sure that every student, when they graduate and they cross that stage, that they are ready for the next step in their life.
Right.
Whether it be college, whether it be.
Or a trade.
A trade, armed service.
Military.
Yes, whatever. We want to make sure that they are all ready for that next phase and that next step in their life, because everybody's different.
Right.
Yeah.
Not everyone's.
You know, the, the whole student is being taken care of.
Right. Mentally, academically, you know, absolutely, the whole student, you're right Heather and, and Matt, you're right. I mean, and, and Kevin too, the vocational classes, it is an area that needs to be addressed.
Right.
You know, uh, last year, one point three percent, I believe, uh, earned industry certifications from this school corporation, one point three percent. So.
Wow.
You know, we need to do better, we need to do better at that.
Also support youth sports, special education system.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, absolutely, special ed.
Student.
A whole student.
Student.
Right.
Yep.
And, and you know, that's the thing, I think with funding that people need to understand that with lack of funding comes lack of resources. That's a domino effect, lack of resources in special ed, one, you know, one-to-one aids.
Yeah, when you start losing money, you're gonna cut corners somewhere.
You've got to cut.
Yeah.
And um.
Nobody wants to do that.
Nobody wants to do that. No.
Mr. Fuller, the keys to funding is retaining the families we have and getting more families here. I'm excited to see what all you can do.
Yes.
Thank you Chris.
Yes, absolutely.
Do you know of teachers that are teaching at Christian school here in town, if they're certified teacher or they just individuals teach, who teach social?
Well, I can't um, speak for the Christian school here individually, but I can tell you for accredited state schools, public schools. Have, their teachers have to be licensed and certified in the areas that they teach. Some of the words, Phil couldn't be a math teacher and teach science. If he's licensed in math, that's what he has to teach. So, you know, for a public school corporation. You're guaranteed that that teacher is teaching once they're licensed in because they're required to do so. That does not hold true at other schools.
Okay.
Private and voucher charter schools, yeah.
Makes sense.
Yeah, so. Good questions. Yeah.
We have, we have some knowledgeable fans.
And you know, that's great, because they need to be.
Yes.
I mean, we all know this is a huge election year for other major important elections going on at the same time, but in our own little community, this is vital. And I've been saying that all along, I'm a Trump guy, yes, 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 but let's not forget, we have a school board election that we have to take care of.
Right.
And, and I know people hate talking politics, but when you, look at Virginia, when you elect the wrong people. In the wrong positions, you can lose your entire state real quick and I, and I'm, I'm just using that as an example. And if, and if you really want to dig deep, look at the history of the, the school board elections in the last few years in this county, in this city. And I'm not saying a turn here, I, I still think Jerry Sanders should still be our school superintendent, but that's my own call. So, uh, I was, I was one of the.
We all three worked with Jerry.
I was one of the first people to post.
Yeah, you did.
Jerry Sanders for school superintendent site, I made that up and ran with it. Because um, I think he would have done a hell of a job and I don't think we would be nearing the mess. Not saying he would have stopped it all.
Right.
Because life happens, we all know that, some things, but I think we would be in a better place. Let me catch up here, I got to rambling on your guys' show. You guys gotta cut me off sometimes. Going to hurt, in those programs, we're only trying to build sports. Yep. Uh, no one beat these three with experience and knowledge, I agree with that Julie. Yeah, with ban and things like that, exactly Steve, that's what I think all three were saying.
Yeah, I mean, I know we did some improvements, there were some improvements to the auditorium a couple of years ago. But what about their classrooms? What about, you know, we go, I'm fortunate to go with our daughter to, she's in the choir and we go to different schools. And I've seen what these, oh my gosh, yeah, what they have.
Right.
And unfortunately, we don't compare.
We don't compare.
Choir and family, we don't compare and that is an area that needs to be looked at.
Fine arts, absolutely.
I can remember, and this is eighty, eighties, I'm dating myself here. But when, when we got that um, sw- swimming pool up there, it was the greatest thing, neatest thing and everybody, we were the envy, you know. Everybody loved to come to our pool and swim.
Right.
They don't even do it anymore, do they? They, they don't, do they use it at all for anything anymore?
They swim, yeah, they have.
But I heard it's not in good shape.
You know, this is, well, okay, so there's talk now, there's talk of a new auditorium being.
And I'm not a swim guy, I believe in, I'm a rock guy.
I can, I can tell you this, the chemicals are spot on in that pool. Because I happen to be close to someone who takes care of that.
Right, no, I'm, I'm talking, but I'm talking about.
I know you mean the facilities.
So a couple of years ago, there was some renovation to our pool.
Right.
Right.
And I'm not, and I know there's, and actually I'm not gonna quote numbers, because I don't know what was going on, but it was renovated. Um, and now there's talk of building a new pool and a auditorium.
Right.
This is going back to where we need to have some strategic thought and planning. Why would we have just spent that money?
Right, for repairs.
For repair, renovating.
Look at just building a new one.
Right.
We've got it, and that's no slam against our administration right now, because they weren't here when that happened.
No.
I, I mean, I think it was too.
But I think that's right.
Right.
But the school board would have approved that.
But I mean, like a community, a community's gonna have a comprehensive plan.
Yeah.
And, and they're gonna, eh, five years and, and the majority of the time, the council, whether it be county or city or the mayor that comes in, everybody's gonna take a look at that. Sure, you're gonna tweak it around the edges.
Sure.
But you're gonna stay driven on that same path.
Right.
No matter what direction you, unless you're total, you're going from uh, uh, radical liberal from, to an extreme conservative, you know, that's, that's the big swing. But normally, you're all gonna stay on that same path. And if that was put forth.
Let's take a look at it then, you know.
You know what I mean?
If it's a year-long planned or if it's five-year, ten-year, fine, we need to have those.
Right.
And work towards those goals.
Right.
And reevaluate.
And reevaluate.
Well, that's the same way with the, the school buildings. We were talking about the age of those, we've got to have strategic plans going through that.
Yes.
Right.
And my thought is, great township is going to move with all, everything's going on. I, I really feel, we've got to start planning on what's gonna.
Happen in the future, yeah.
I think you're right.
It's hard right now because of not knowing where French Road's and, you know, and like when people are coming northbound thirty-seven, let's just throw that out there, you know, and. They don't know, we live here, so we know how to get to Walmart and this is before the bridge was completed, you know. But when you have a sign that so-and-so's closed or this road's closed, you know, a lot of people from out of town don't know that road, so they don't know if they turn down Mahaly'sville Road.
Right, when you drove out there in the middle of Cornfield Way, where are we going? I called my councilman up that night. Get some lights out there mister.
I, it's needed, definitely needed.
It was funny. That, that's very true though, because the first time I drove over there, I was like, Walmart's, where am I going? I'm, I'm going to Mahaly'sville, I've been out this way before back in the day, but normally there's a six-pack or something involved here. But you drove all the way out there and uh, it was, it was uh, it was different to all of us because. We all grew up looking at that, building out that way and seeing Cornfield and Snowfall on it for twenty years, you know.
Right.
And then all of a sudden, now it's a shopping center and now it's an interstate.
This and, and um, and Matt, you know, you just hit on a point too, we were talking about the age of our buildings and. You know, I was talking to someone just this past week about all the names of our buildings that have changed, you know. That's heartbreaking too, because you know, we always grew up and, hey, I went to Smith School, I went to Charles L. Smith and I went to, you know. Well, when you talk about Ron Bell, it's the legacy.
You want to talk about names real quick and I, and I'll stop you. Greg, Jeff, Chris, myself and Brad, a few others, we all went to school together. Mr. Smith would bright, drag us in to, to East Elementary, or East Elementary School.
Right.
And we would play basketball and I always had, and we're fourth graders, fourth and fifth grader, fifth graders. And I could never dribble with my head up, so he would shut the lights off in the gym and blindfold me and make me dribble. And um, I think we're in eighth grade when Mr. Smith passed away and instantly the school became Charles L. Smith. And then of course Jeff's dad, Mr. Bell, and then you had Smith, Smith Elementary and Billy's Middle. And you hear things like that and then they, you know, it just hard, it is heartbreaking.
It is heartbreaking.
These are people that, that affected the community in positive ways for many years.
That meant something to the community and, um, you know.
We're losing that and that's what, that's why I got behind you three. Three established names of people in this community that have been here, have fought the fight and stood up for our community and what we believe in and I. That's why I want you guys, that's why I want, my own personal opinion, I want you guys to win.
Yes, thank you.
Because I think you can bring back, and I'm not, you know, and somebody, the gold pants, yes. Bring back the gold pants all you want. But I'm talking about that connection, yeah, Hammond School too. That connection between the Martinsville Artisan High School, the superintendent, and, and the community. The only reason we really disliked the superintendent or anything back in the day is when he would get in his Humvee and drive through eight inches of snow and say the roads are clear, you're going to school. Like, there's no way, you know. But that was it. That was the only time.
It's no name, those were the only.
That was it.
But it is funny what people remember because, you know, as you know, Meredith is a junior at Taylor University this year and um, she's played for the last couple of years with a girl from New Powell. And her parents are great people and you know, we've obviously went to games and traveled to tournaments and everything and and he was always, what about those super quick artisans? Whatever happened to super quick artisans? Like, we still have super quick artisans. You just don't hear about it, you know, so much, at the super quick, but those are the kind of things, you know, Kevin, that we used to be known for. And that was our name, super quick artisans.
When we went to the final four my senior year, we had buttons, license plate stickers, we had Big Red Express on our front of license plate, CBK sold them. We had all that stuff covered and then, you know, I'd go in, military, come back and it, it fizzled and goes away and then, then it's all gone. And then this question right here, and this just strikes me to a nerve. Um, how do you have a football field named after a man who isn't even allowed to walk on the field? And to me, as a former player for that gentleman, I, I don't get that at all.
I don't, I don't get that.
Yeah. I, I, and I know he was a coach and, and spent his blood, sweat and tears and gave it to the kids, no different than Mr. Siderwitz did. And I know what your husband's done. And I know what your husband's done, all for this community. And I still don't get that. And I will not understand that. That is, that is a wrong that needs to be rectified, in my opinion.
I would agree with that.
And hopefully.
Totally agree.
Yeah. That's right, that gets me fired up.
I know.
I mean, that, there's things that you remember, you walk in the gym, you seen John Coons, Bill Siderwitz, Coach Dave and Tut, sitting there watching every basketball game ever played, eating the popcorn right down there in the corner. And then in the football, if Bill wasn't up in the booth, Coach Siderwitz, he was down the end zone, sitting down there with whomever.
Right.
And why does that have to change is beyond me. There's things you need to change and there's things you don't need to touch.
I think, yeah, I think our former staff, they all need to feel welcome.
Right.
Yes.
You know, they gave their blood, sweat and tears to this district and we have a lot of people that don't feel welcome.
That's how you build your alumni.
It is heartbreaking.
Yes, it is heartbreaking. And there are people that don't feel.
That is a very valid point.
You know, and um, I get asked all the time, why don't you still work here? But it's no secret, I work at Mooresville School Corporation. This is my sixth school year there. Um, I left here because of very philosophical differences, I will say, with the last superintendent. I won't say total administration, but last superintendent, um, for those very reasons. Because there's people here who, given their life, they were proud of the job that they did. And I'm talking from cafeteria custodians, teachers, I'm talking all of them.
Right. The school corporation encompasses a lot more than just teachers and school board people.
Because we couldn't, we couldn't go a day without our bus drivers, without our custodians, without our cafeteria people getting there at four or five o'clock in the morning, fixing food for our children. We couldn't do it without them. And that's a whole community within itself. And I think, you know, we've lost that. You know, these people gave, like Heather said, their blood, sweat and tears. And it's sad. When they're like, what am I gonna do now? And I don't have this, or my hours were cut, or this or that. And, and I'm not saying that some other schools haven't done that. I'm just saying there's a way that you can do things and there's a way that, you know, people need to feel valued. And that's, that's the key word, valued.
Right.
And you've gotta show some compassion.
You have to show some compassion.
Yeah.
Well, and, and this community's not afraid to hear tough, tough decisions and, and I think to a person, if you look them in the face and say, hey, we have to do A, B and C because of A, B and C, I don't like it, you don't like it, yes. We, we don't like it.
We don't explain it to them.
Yes, we're just gonna do it and, and you don't need to know why, because this is what I get paid to do.
Right.
You work for me. I, I filled that ballot out and voted for you. I wanna know why. That's the thing.
I think it goes back to transparency.
Yeah, hundred percent.
As long as this is why, you know, this decision's being made, or this is why this is happening, and lay it out, and this community will rally behind that. You know, I think some decisions, we don't always like the decisions that people make, but you have to.
I'm gonna spill the beans here. And, and when I heard you three were interested in running, I stepped back from what I do here as a person. Because, and, and I'm, I'm gonna go, we didn't discuss this, folks. This was not set up in case someone's on, Kevin's setting something up. No, 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 he's not. He's gonna make him nervous here.
Wait a minute, should we take a commercial break?
I'll go through each one of you. I can call your husband anytime I want, day or night, and ask him, Phil, I don't like this, what's going on? And guess what? He will answer me. And I know what, you'd be the same way on a question for school board. Hundred percent. Your husband.
People call him day and night.
They do.
He knows, you know, things that have went on with Porch Time in the school. And I could call him day or night, and I would ask for an honest answer. And that man had no reason to give me an honest answer because he could have said, it's out of my hands. He would tell me straight to my face, and he did. So I mean, there's two of you, and I've known that man and his family in this community for decades. And I know if I ask him anything, he's gonna give me the honest answer, whether it's true, whether it's gonna hurt me or not, but it's gonna be a hundred percent factual. So when I made my decision who I was gonna vote for, it was pretty damn easy. And because you've, those are people you're married to and, and, and work with, and you guys deserve what you're gonna have. And it's gonna be on the school board for Martinsville. And that's what we hope.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, appreciate that.
Decisions have to be made. Sometimes it is difficult when you have ties to the community.
Right.
But on the flip side, if you've got good relationships with people, it's easier. If you can just have a nice, honest conversation, find and be compassionate, it makes all the difference in the world.
Yeah, there you go. This is, which is why some of us left our hometown and didn't ever look back. And that's sad, Michelle and I. We love you out there in Iowa though, still. We give you a big hug, you know that. Look at this, fifty-five minutes almost, fifty-four minutes. Time flies when you're having fun.
Time does fly. Like, we don't even know how long we're gonna be on here, so.
Well, here's a funny story on that. When um, when Mr. Myers and Mr. Worth came in for the um, debate for the sheriff's race that year. Rich wanted a, a set time, and I'm like trying to explain to him, we don't, we don't, we don't time. You know, and he's, he's a scheduled man. You know that a hundred percent, especially now that he's, if he's gonna do A, B and C and it's gonna take five minutes, three minutes, four minutes, that's his path. And I'm like, we don't have a schedule. And he's like, I need to know. I'm like, I've got eleven questions. It may take six hours. He looked at me like. Can't hear Heather, you're gonna have to start yelling.
Heather, start yelling. Because it's good, you don't wanna miss it. So.
Current mysteries, only the good ones are effective, yeah. I, I think we're well on the path to changing things uh, with you three. And some of the, some of the situations are not this school board or this superintendent, more so the last one, and some of them are this, you know. It's, it's been a progression of bad, bad decisions, I think. And that's how the community feels in a big way.
It's, yeah, I mean, it's taken a few years to kind of get to where we are, I think.
Yeah.
And it's gonna take a few years.
To correct it.
To hopefully.
To make things right.
Switch the climate around and, and hopefully be able to increase some enrollment. But, but we have to acknowledge it and we've gotta start asking those questions. Why are you leaving? What, what do other school districts offer that we don't? What can we improve?
Right. And if you don't ask those questions, you're not gonna know. And, and the thing is, you know, we're mandated at the high school level to have exit interviews. That doesn't mean the parents always gonna come in and give it to you, but we're mandated to try to get that.
Right.
But we don't do that at other grade levels. And I don't know why. Why aren't we doing that at other grade levels? Because we should have been over, you know, last several years, actually always, we should be asking, why are you leaving? And it doesn't always have to be, it could always be things like that, well, better curriculum, more rigorous. Um, they had one-to-one devices for all students. All students got to take those devices home. It was, you know, a lot of great feedback, like I said, when I put my survey out there. So if you don't know those kind of answers, you can't correct the problem.
Right.
And um, I think, I just feel like we need to start doing that at all levels. And if we don't, this is gonna continue. And like you said, Heather, this didn't get this way overnight, Kevin. We're not gonna fix it overnight. No, no boy's gonna fix it overnight.
I, I go back to Devon, um, she was at the Connections Academy up in Ball State. Um, just finished her junior year, taking courses that I'm like, what, what are you taking? What is that? You know, killing it. GPA out the roof. She, her senior year, her and Shelby were considering coming back from Martinsville for senior year. It's your senior year, you know what I mean?
Right.
She called the school herself and threw at them what all she had taken at the Connections Academy. And they told her, you'll have to take that over again before you can take this here because we don't accept that grade from them, or something ridiculous like that. She said, I'm a senior, I took that my junior and already, already got a four-point-oh on it, why would I take it again? Well, then you'll have to come in in summer school and take it here. And she said, ah, nevermind, I'll stay. So then, then she got denied you at a three-point-nine GPA now, so whatever.
Yeah.
But I'm like, that, they lose out on kids like that. I'm sure she's not the only one. You gotta be willing to work with those kids that have drifted away, have gone to like um, uh, Ma, or, yeah, Mac said, homeschooling or, or Tabernacle, nothing against Tabernacle, or Monrovia. But if, if they wanna come home, and that's how I envision you guys, come home to Martinsville.
That's right.
You know what I mean? Come back home to Martinsville, cuz that's, that's what we are here.
Work with them. And you know, and sometimes those are some of the things that you need to evaluate. What kind of dual credit programs do we have here? What kind of um, accelerated programs do we have here? What kind of programs do we have at the middle school that would start allowing them to earn, you know, high school credit? And I know for many, many years, it was just algebra, and there's a few more now. But when you look at those areas, what kind of things could we be teaching at the middle school level, letting them earn high school credits early before they ever even get at the high school level? Those are the things that are gonna help them later get into any college, if they decide to go to college.
Kenny said, go up. These social, emotional learning programs, that one.
Yes.
Came in late, have we discussed?
There was another guy that asked.
That's above my pay grade.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, you know, we, we were all asked questions, um, again, from the Reporter Times and Chamber of Commerce about different areas. Not even just social, emotional, but sex education, bullying, cyber safety, you know, all those things. Indiana Code mandates what our curriculum has to be.
Yeah.
So, it's, you know, maybe we can determine what the curriculum is that we actually teach, but they mandate that we have to do these things. And then again, one of my responses exactly for cybersecurity, Indiana Code dictates grades three and up have to be instructed in internet safety. We must do that. Sex education, health and wellness, some of the things that, they are tough subjects, they are sensitive subjects. But Indiana Code mandates that it's in our curriculum. Um, so sometimes regardless of how we feel personally, we're mandated to follow that.
Follow the rules.
Right.
Uh, appreciate you guys running school boards, thanks. Yeah. Not an easy task. We can't, can't keep getting rid of teaching principals who bond with the kids.
Relationships are everything.
Did anyone bother to ask Chris or why he left for Bloomington? Uh, change is good, good luck to y'all. We're, we should be begging Chris to stay. Good luck. We need a junior ROTC. I thought they did have one at one point in time.
I don't think they ever have.
Uh, some of you kids have lost another good teacher yet. I've been in Martinsville ten years, hoping to see you guys get in there and make some changes. Thank you, Ebony. Uh, absolutely. My kids had, both had him, loved his class. This makes me sad to see you left. A lot of love in this community.
Well, I mean, he knows that.
You see this, we have ninety-eight-five people on here tonight wanting to hear your points of view, who you are, what you're about, and, and I bet you, I bet you seventy-five of them know you personally. Because they know what you're about. They know what you're gonna do for us. And they're pulling for you.
Appreciate that.
That is absolutely much appreciated.
Yeah.
Yeah, the support has been overwhelming, it really has been overwhelming.
It has been overwhelming.
I've had.
I was gonna ask that.
Former administrators reach out to me, current administration and staff, teachers, kid, you know, kids and families. It's just, it has been overwhelming. It's just amazing.
It has been.
And just um, text messages and emails that, hey, I just voted and I voted for you.
That's awesome.
And it means a lot. And um.
That's a good deal.
Thank you all.
Yes, thank you guys for your support.
Yes, it is.
That is.
I had some people come up to me at church.
That's good to know though. I mean, that's good, good to hear. And that means you guys are spreading the right word, you know?
And it's kinda funny too, because this is tough and this is something I've never done. And there are days that you're like, oh my gosh, this is awful, you know.
Come on November third.
I was gonna say.
Come on November third.
It's almost here.
You know, feeling down and, you know, you're just feeling down. And it never fails. I'll get a text message or a Facebook message or from somebody that is totally unexpected. And I think that's why I'm doing it. Right there.
Right, that's the reason, or.
So thank you all for that.
Absolutely. And, you know, we all have jobs. We all have full-time jobs.
Yeah.
It's hard to do that and come home and, you know, campaign and keep your household running. And it is so important.
It is so important. The stakes are high.
I remember one of the last things I said last year when the election was over for me and I, they sit you down, they stuff up, they either go over and talk to CBK on the microphone. Actually, we went at our site first and then we went over and talked to them. But the first thing I said is, for anybody that thinks this stuff is easy, put on a pair of these shoes and walk in them. You know it, you know it, you know it. It, it's not easy, no matter what you want to run for political, you have to have it in your heart to wanna change for your community for the better.
Right.
Because there, there's gonna be people coming at you and throw spears at you from all sorts of directions. And you're like, I, I didn't see that come. Where did that come from?
It's like other aspects of your life. You're not gonna please everybody all the time.
Exactly.
And, and that's hard because you want to. It's just, I think, human nature. You wanna make everybody happy.
And it's especially more so what you guys are doing, because it's a direct connection directly to family and kids.
Yeah.
You know, political seats, mayor, city council, it's for the community, so to speak, but you guys are hands-on, right there with the kids and the, and the families.
And the kids are, they are our most precious commodity.
They are. And they are the future. I mean, they are the future. And um, you know, I've, I've shared with these guys, um, you know, my grandsons are in football, football, flag football. And when you are sitting there watching the game and all of the parents are, I won't say complaining, but they have concerns. Um, and maybe some complaining, that would be from Danielle Ferguson. About, you know.
One less vote.
I'm sorry, Danielle. You know, about how many times, um, maybe the kids are, they have to log in here and they have to log in there and this QR code didn't work and, you know what? Um, technology, cuz obviously that's where I work, that's my focus. But you know, those are some things that could be immediately um, fixed. And that doesn't mean, hey, Jackie Decker's gonna walk in and make everything be in one program.
Right.
That's a goal. It could be there and it could be very easily done. Um, but those are the things that, you know, you want to alleviate. The parents are under a tremendous burden. Parents, staff, I mean, everyone's under, but parents are under a tremendous burden um, with the stoplight approach that we've had so far. And, and being e-learning on Wednesdays, I think that's hard for them for like babysitting and childcare and they're not teachers.
I wanna ask this because COVID, totally brand-new ballgame, not only for political running, but for teaching and education. How many parents out there now are gonna keep their kids homeschooling? And how many of them are gonna be like, you open them schools next week, and get them in there, the kids are going to school forever, you know what I mean? But I mean, I, there's gonna be a percentage, I guarantee you, that's gonna say, hey, it wasn't bad. I like having Billy or Suzie home with me at all times. So you're gonna lose some there, I bet, right off the bat. And you're probably gonna get some that'll pay you double to take the kids. I know my dad would have thrown me in that building, get in there, COVID or not, so.
We, I mean, I teach at Monrovia High School now, and we've gone since the first day with in-person. And we've not had any, I mean, we've had a couple of things happen and we've had to quarantine some, but I mean, we're fine, you know?
Monrovia's really booming a lot of areas up there. And I know, I know quite a few of the teachers up there, good, good folks, former Martinsville folks. Um, it's a great little area.
Right. And I mean, you know, just learn to adapt to everything. I mean, you take it one day at a time. You know, and you do the best you can with the things that you have to deal with.
Right. Same way with, I think, all the surrounding school corporations, you know, and, and um, I've said it in my answers and I'll say it here publicly. I believe the school corporation should have offered parents an e-learning option along with in-person. And I believe that with my whole heart, that that should have been done because um, I think we did have a mass exodus of some students. Uh, parents taking their students elsewhere because they wanted them in school.
Right.
And um, let's face it, COVID's scary. I've been hit with it personally. Three of my family members have had it. Um, and suffered for a long time with it. So it is scary, it's real. And, and I agree that, you know, I think parents, I respect their rights to do whatever they want to do with their children to keep them safe. But all of us, you know, Mooresville, Monrovia, I think, eminence, we all started on time, in person, but we also did offer e-learning options.
Yeah.
And I feel like that we really missed the boat on that. Um, and I feel like that we could have kept some more students here enrolled if we had done that. That's Jackie's point.
And in my point of view.
I agree with Jake's point.
From the teaching perspective, I think this, the teachers here have gotten a lot of extra burden. Because at Monrovia, our kids, if they choose e-learning, go straight to a person that's coordinator for e-learning. Where the kids here have in-person, but then the teacher has to turn right around and deal with the ones with e-learning or.
Right.
And that on Wednesday too.
Wednesdays are hard days on the kids.
They are. They're getting routine, then they stay home, then back to two-day routine.
E-learning option or a hybrid, yeah.
Yeah. Sure. And, and you know, those are the kind of things, um, and I keep mentioning surveys, but I'm a big fan of them. How do you know?
You like our polls on Porch Time? Is that what you're saying?
I like the polls. Um, but how do you know? You know, I'm, I'm not, again, knocking anyone in particular, I'm just saying, we could have been, we've all, since March of, March sixteenth of twenty-twenty, had been faced with this. Everything's shut down. We're all mandated to stay home. Kids, you're, you're at home, schools are shut down. So we've all had since March to prepare. It wasn't like it was a big surprise. And so, in my opinion, we should have been asking the parents and staff members, not just parents, staff members. Because if you don't have staff members returning to your school and they're afraid to come back because they have compromised immune systems, or because they're elderly, or whatever the reason, or they take care of someone elderly at home, you need to know that. And you should have been uh, asking those questions long before the school year started to know, hey, if I offered you learning, how many of you would take me up on that?
That was, that was a big question off the bat. We've known this was coming.
Right.
It's not like, hey, oh my gosh, August school's here, what do we do? And then Martinsville seemed like, I have friends in Mooresville, I have friends in Monrovia and other, Martinsville seemed like they're like, oh boy, what, we don't know what we're gonna do. That was, that was what we got. And I was kinda shocked at that. Honestly, Wednesdays are a reason Camden is doing connections emotionally. She could not go back forth. Yes, I thought.
I get it, Twyla. I get it. I do. I think it's hard. It's, it's hard on my grandsons. It's hard on everyone's kids to do that. Now, whether or not, it could be the greatest of intentions of, you know, whatever, that's, but it is hard on staff and it's hard on students. Bottom line, that's a, and that's a fact.
I wanna ask you three personally. Best thing about running for office, what have you gathered so far with a month away? Uh, hang on, you also need to put their input in order to start safely. There you go. Jennifer, she is one of the Martinsville transfers to Monrovia. Great gal, always helps me out, anyway. Jennifer, she is one of the Martinsville transfers to Monrovia. Great gal, always helps me out. Anyway.
Yeah.
You're right.
Oh, they're, they're firing these off now. They're cutting me. Here's what, it's Shelley, most definitely lack of communication. Here's what I know about the three folks. Relentless and one of the best, raises a tough decision to. Rob.
That is true. That is true. Thank you, Rob.
Thank you.
That's a.
Absolutely, Leslie.
That's a, he, he, he lives and die Artesian right there. He is.
He believes red and blue. Yes, he does. Believes red and blue and he always will. And he knows how I feel about him.
Yes.
Love him. I love him.
Uh and, and not that he doesn't get recognition, but I still think he's the most underappreciative person in this community.
The man works day and night.
Yeah, I don't know how he's, he doesn't sleep. He doesn't sleep. He doesn't eat. He does eat, because I catch him at Mexican restaurant down there five days a week. He says Tuesdays.
But it's Wednesday, Thursday. I'm pretty sure there's a couple other people there with him too. Jason Carter, I'm not gonna say your name, but yeah, there's some people there with him. And uh, he's right. I think, I think we are relentless. You know, I think back, um, well, when I first started here, I started here in April two thousand with Martinsville.
April of two thousand.
April of two thousand.
I was July of two thousand.
July of two thousand. So Heather and I started about the same time and that was.
Two thousand six.
Okay. And so they had just purchased Skyward, the student management software that we use here, um, Family Access. Y'all love it. Use it. If you don't, let's, let's start using it. Um, but you know, that was April two thousand. I had Meredith, July third of two thousand. I literally had her an hour later was on the phone with Skyward. We were in the middle of a conversion. I had a school year to start.
Push, hang on.
I had, you know, we had teachers to train. We had to get this data converted and literally, and you'll know, I'm gonna throw Darryl Potter, who was our director of technology at the time. I started, he handed me a book and said, here you go.
Did they let you get out of hospital or did you add or were they?
Well, I called Skyward and she goes, what are you doing? And I said, I just had a baby. She goes, no, I mean, really, what are you doing? I said, no, I really just had a baby an hour ago. She's in the nursery, so what, what are we gonna do about this? She's like, you're absolutely crazy. And then um, that was July third of two thousand. Then my dad passed away unexpectedly, August fifth of two thousand. Literally, we had his funeral and I went to work the next day. Because we had people on site training Skyward, so am I dedicated to this corporation? You better believe I'm dedicated to this corporation.
So when people talk about a rough twenty twenty, your two thousand wasn't exactly.
I didn't have a good, good year.
And I can vouch for Jackie, because we worked together.
Yes.
We did reporting together and we, oh my gosh, I can vouch for her and her knowledge.
Bethany raises a great point. This experience or lack thereof, of some of the individuals being brought in to leadership positions in this community and this district has been shocking to me. And where they came from, things like that, it's, that's, that, that has to change. You know, you, you don't want to bring in a Mr. Sanders who's decades of experience in the entire school district. You want to run him off. And you're, and you're bringing in principals and e- educators with little or no experience. And I think that's a big reason where we're at.
Hiring processes may need to be looked at.
Yeah.
Definitely, yes.
Yes.
And, and I don't know applicants. I don't know who's applied. I don't.
I don't know if they were.
Why.
Right, if they were the best qualified at this time, but you're right, Heather and, and Matt, and I think those are things we have to look at because. Right, and you know, same way with teachers, you know, Kevin, we wouldn't want all brand-new teachers out of college. You've got to have some veteran teachers here.
And you've got to utilize them.
You've got to have a mixture.
Don't try and. Yes, utilize your veteran teachers.
It's almost like any team. You're not gonna win with a bunch of rookies.
No.
You're gonna have to have a good blend of, of veterans in the middle of the road and, and the rookies and you bring them along one by one. But when you're knocking off five-star teachers and principals and saying, we don't need you no more. And we're gonna bring in this guy who's been a principal for thirty days now. What, what in the heck just happened?
Well, and, and I think, you know, I can speak for all of us. Well, I will speak for all of us, so you guys just jump in, you know, um, you know, we have been a stepping stone. We've been a stepping stone and, and I'm not saying people, that would be if, if we were trying to experience in something. They need to start somewhere. But I think you have to balance that out. You can't have all brand-new superintendents and all brand-new principals in any school corporation because that's just a, you know, that's just a formula for failure because you need someone with experience.
You've got to lean on somebody.
You have to lean on somebody, absolutely. And, and I think that we definitely need to look at that because I think we become a stepping stone here for superintendents, principals, teachers.
Right.
And, and I say stepping stone, you get what I'm saying.
Oh, yeah, no.
They get their experience and then move on. Like, they're only gonna be here short term.
In some, some of it, it's not even, and I, and I, and I don't want this to sound cruel, but it's shuffle the deck and you, you, you least, this group goes this way and this group and, and we get them and then three years later, they go there, they go here and it's, it's just a continuation of the same.
Right.
And I think, I think Matt just said it, you're, we're doing, it's in this, it's insane. Insane. We're doing the same thing over and over again. We're just changing the names.
And that's not what's best for kids. We've got, we need to focus on keeping our staff here. That's what's best for kids, building those relationships.
Absolutely.
I've, one of my favorite things is to listen to my kids talk about having the same teacher.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Or if, if they've been there long enough.
Right.
I've had that teacher and then my daughter, that happened this year, which was so fun that I had a teacher and then she had. But those relationships, and then those teachers know those families too.
Right.
It's just, it all goes hand in hand. It's what's best for kids. Take care of your staff.
I mean, could you imagine getting rid of a Mr. Mann, telling him he's gotta quit the school because he's too old and he doesn't teach well anymore? That guy gave more knowledge to boys in that school than any book could have ever taught us. And, and nowadays they'd run a guy out like, run him out. And I mean, he blistered your, in a heartbeat, he ripped hair out of the back of your head and twisted your ear.
But he was respected.
But it's respected.
Bet he was. And then if he said, get up, you, you were up before, you came out of his mouth.
That's right.
So.
The thing right now with the COVID, you need people with experience to run things. Because if you don't, it makes it a lot harder also.
Right.
In a crisis, you need some experience.
You need some experience.
Yep.
Absolutely, and uh. Yeah, it's hard and there's a lot of mandates this year that we haven't had in past years because of COVID.
Oh, yeah.
A lot of tracking and some things that we need to be, you know, concerned with.
John Mann was a legend. Repurpose and retrain the staff, not for political gender or vendetta, but for the good of all suits. Megan.
Point.
Yes, Megan.
Perfectly said, dear.
And, and that's the thing too with inexperienced folks, I feel like our kids deserve better.
Yeah.
Um.
They do.
They deserve the best. And if I didn't believe that, I wouldn't be running for this position.
Same.
Ditto.
Yeah.
Ditto, ditto.
I, I believe that from all three of you. Like I said, I, I, I told my own little personal piece that I've not said to anybody, but when I sat back and looked at all three of you and realized, I, I, I know where you're from. I, I, I walk the same path as many of you guys, so. And I think this is what this community needs. There's a lot of things we need, but this is gonna rectify some issues on the school board and we can move forward.
We hope the community feels that way too, Kevin. Thank you.
Wes Knox says, yeah, Mr. Mann was, was a man. Yes, he was. Well, I mean, I, I, I can date myself there. I had Mr. Hubert Bastin at Poston Road.
Yeah.
Who was a legend. I had Mr. Smith, a- a- and I had Mr. Bell. And I can't think of three, you know, I, I had Mrs. Rosenbaum, Mrs. Asher. And some of these names you, you probably know. Mrs. Asher was a saint. She just was an angel for me in, I think, third grade, probably.
Yep.
Um, Mrs. Rosenbaum. Just some of the names like that. And they're still, I, I ran into Mrs. Rosenbaum over there on Sunrise Edition. I was like, oh my goodness, you remember me, you know?
And she's a halo, Kevin.
Yeah. Thanks, Mrs. Rosenbaum. No.
Well, I know I was thinking about that when you were talking about reps earlier and talking to Cory about reps. I mean, I'm gonna embarrass mine. I mean, who goes to reps, Cory, and goes the other direction? I mean, isn't the goal there to go there and lose weight? Because, you know, I know someone, I'm very close to someone who, he's gone the opposite direction.
Is this the same person that does the chemicals in the pool? I'm just asking.
It is. It is the same person. I'm like, what is up with that? Because if that's the outcome, I'm gonna continue to stay at home. I'm just telling you.
And they do have, what I like to do is I like to go there and I just buy those protein bars and then come and walk right out and eat them.
Get a snack.
They're like eight bucks, but damn, they're good. Coach Kuntz was the best. He absolutely was. I tell you what, if you, you wanna talk, we're talking a little history here.
I love it.
Coach Kuntz is a driver's ed teacher, was scared, would scare you to death. Cause he, you're driving along there, you know, like, dude, I'm doing fifty down the highway and Coach Kuntz just knocked my brains out. And he'd tell you, take your hands off the wheel and slam on the brakes. What? You know, cause he's putting you through light. He, he'd throw that buck out the window. He's telling you what's gonna happen. And he was just a ball. Mr. Piracy, yeah. Tammy says, leave Phil alone.
Tammy, I live with him.
Mr. Piracy.
Henry Piracy, yep.
What do you think about even, even, not even so far back, Lou Fagans and, you know, some of the ones, I mean. You know, this could go on and on. I mean, you know, of the great administrators and, and teachers and, I mean.
And, and we, we cut that, that bloodline so to speak, as far as um coming up through the system and working their way. Cause Mr. Mr. Bastin, wasn't Mr. Bastin, he didn't, you know, walk in as Mr. Bastin. He probably taught long before I got here. And then he was there. Mr. Burleson, the same way, you know?
Well, Mr. Bell was my brother's math teacher.
There you go. Yeah, so.
And you know, we always leave Jan Bell out, you know?
Yeah.
Great teacher. She was my fifth grade teacher and.
Yeah.
And I babysat for Suzanne and Jeff, so that dates me. But, you know, great, great people and we just, we've had that over the years.
Mr. Nash, driver's ed, Mr. Burleson, Mr. Kuntz, James Brighton, I forgot.
Yeah.
Um, I had Mr. Buskirk for DECA. Yeah.
The Hannafords.
I had Mr. Hannaford in eighth, eighth grade science, I think.
Yep.
Yeah.
Jim Brighton was probably the reason I'm a teacher, because I started subbing at West.
Yeah.
When he was the principal. He was amazing.
It's, it's those names and, and, and the heart and passion they put in our community, that's what's missing.
But, but that's what we want our kids. I mean, they don't know the bells and the bongs. They don't. But we want them to in ten, fifteen, twenty years to have the stories.
Yes.
We, I want that for my kids. I want that for everyone's kids, to have the, the stories that those teachers were there a long time.
And made a positive influence on the future for those people. Yeah.
Um, well, you know, my two oldest kids would say that we always talk about Meredith. Well, it's because my kids are very spread out in age. And so Meredith is, yes, she is. No, Danielle says she is. She's not. I love all my children the same, but Meredith is the youngest one. You know, and, and again, one of my answers to the teachers' union and to, um, not to the reporter, but to the teachers' union when they asked about teacher retention. And I said, I'm so glad you asked that question. Um, because Meredith is a accounting and finance major. And some of her professors have chatted and said, how are you so good in stats? How are you so great at this?
I know.
And she said, she didn't hesitate. She goes, cause I had the best teacher, best stats teacher in the whole world, Mr. Eric Lund.
Oh, wow.
And uh, you know, and that's how she truly feels. And she got a great education here. It's not, it's not about that, you know, there, there's great teachers. And we still have them. I want to keep them.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Um, Julie says, talking about history, Matt, please share your experience with DECA and BPA and how you give some special ad to the board.
Well, I think I've touched on a little bit. A lot of the students we had in DECA, BPA, they do the competitions. The competitions help prepare them for the business community. And as we have seen with, like I said, with having uh students at Home Bank and at uh, that were in DECA and BPA because of the competition. They speak in front of people. I've had several that have gone on to Purdue and now I think Samantha Johnson works for a TV station in Evansville, Indiana now.
That's awesome.
And Samantha was awesome at Miss Ball State. You know, it just gave them great presentation skills. Um, the competition, the kids met, kids from other schools, the networking. Jeff Haggard used to judge and said that a lot of the kids that he interviewed, he'd hire them on the spot for a job, you know, as an employer. So I mean, that was something, the community partnerships with the business. And that's what DECA and BPA bring to that.
I'm a DECA alum.
I'm fortunate that they are keeping DECA. I helped to, to uh talk to a gentleman that's gonna take the DECA here at Martinsville High School.
Good.
So I'm glad. I don't know if he's also gonna do business professionals, but I am glad that DECA's staying.
When I first got into DECA, it was Mr. Branch my junior year and then Sheldon Buskirk my senior year. Um, but went to state both times. Good, great class. Um, and then actually my senior year, after DECA, I was out. The school was over for me at noon, so that was, that was the best. Mr. Buskirk wouldn't always agree with that, cause I'll tell you who was in, I'll tell you who was in our DECA class. It was me and Johnny Elliott, so I'll just leave it at that. Yeah, it's good times.
I'll have to ask my net about that.
Yeah, there you go. Yeah. Uh Paul Smith is the only name I recognize. He's been around for a while. I won three in state javelin. I don't think I ever won anything. I think we won something, but that's awesome. I, I did, I think DECA is, is, is vital. And I, I hope they keep that and continue to grow with that because I know there for a while, it seemed like they got away from it, because we would see them at the fall foliage, they'd have a booth and sell like, just like we did when we were in. And then I, I think it went away for a while, but hopefully, hopefully it comes back strong.
And you think FFA and, and some of those programs too, that, you know, we used to be very, very strong in.
Right. Becky McKeever, my best wish, thank you so much, stepping up. Yep.
Thank you, Becky.
Thank you.
Ms. Reese used to do OEA, best class ever.
Loved Ms. Reese. Loved her.
Matt's not pulling any punches tonight.
Hey, Matt, this is for fun, okay?
I believe he's speaking truthfully though, but anyway. Well, guys, we've been running an hour and twenty-six minutes. I'm also, it's amazing.
Yes.
Uh, like I said, I, I told my story, I wasn't going to, uh, I may, people are, oh, you're just using it for your show. No, I actually looked at these three people individually by myself away from this. I would still have interviewed them if, whether I'm supporting them or not, because I, I, I think I like all three of them. They like me and they're, they're good for our community either way. But there's a bond with these three in our community. And, and they're trustworthy and they're transparent. And I think personally, that's gonna carry over to the school board. And that's what I've said we've needed. I could be wrong, but I can give you a list of eight hundred other people that feel the same way. And uh, hopefully you three will get in there.
Appreciate it.
I know it's a long run for you guys, especially with the COVID stuff. Um, hang in there. You're less than a month away. I know early voting started now.
I think the turnout has been great.
Phenomenal, from what I've heard.
Yes, phenomenal. They are close tomorrow.
For Columbus State, but they'll be open.
Pick it back up on the thirteenth.
What, what was the numbers? Almost, was it six thousand thus far votes or is it more than that?
Something like that, cause like. I think they're out. I've heard of. Twelve, thirteen hundred a day. It's been unheard of.
Yeah.
In this county for a long time.
I think there's a red wave coming across the country. That's my own hunch. And I think that's just trickling down to everything, so.
It has been tough because we haven't had some of the forums that some others have had in the past. You know, we had, we didn't have the fair, you know, we're gonna have the fall foliage. I mean, you know, some things that where we could get out there and actually talk to people face to face. It's been tough.
How many door, door have you guys done? Any, all, any? That's probably hard.
It's hard.
It is.
You gotta be careful.
Knocking the wrong door, yeah.
Right.
We've been doing a lot.
So we've tried to be creative.
Yeah.
Some of our things, but.
Yeah, but, you know, postcards and mail.
Yeah.
Or not mail, but.
See us this next week a little bit, you know, but.
I don't want to give away secrets, but yeah, 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 yeah.
You can't give everything away, Kevin.
Trying to think outside the box a little.
Outside the box, yeah. So, so this great, this has been great.
Yes. Yes.
Jennifer, I would vote for you if I could. I'm choosing the high road and voting for a new school board, Nanette. Good answer, Nanette. Good luck to all of you. God bless you. Got a lot of love. I, I, like I said, I think it would be very hard pressed to find three individuals with more knowledge in history of our school corporation than you three right now. And, and that's, that's vital. You, you have a touch of the new and a lot of the old, and I, I think you can pull that in and make it work. Um, and we kept an audience of seventy people for an hour and a half, so we're either extremely bored or extremely interested.
There's nothing to watch, right?
I don't know. Colts game over?
Colts game is over.
Texas, I'm gonna make my good point about voting. Don't, don't vote straight ticket.
Yes, that's true. Do not vote straight ticket. You won't be able to vote for your school board.
That's right. So. And make sure, and we want to stress, Kevin, I know a lot of people have done a good job of it, but we do want to stress, just because we have to run in the district that we live in. So for me, it's district one and, you know, three and four. You can vote wherever you live. You don't have to live in our district to vote for us. You can live, or wherever you live, vote for us. You can vote one person in each district. So if you want to vote for all three of us, you certainly can do that, but scroll down the ballot. Make sure you're doing that. And so don't vote straight ticket.
Bottom line is, you can check the box of each three of these individuals, no matter where you live in the district.
Yep, right.
Don't vote, I mean, I'm not gonna say don't vote straight ticket, because I think a lot of that goes on anyway. But be careful on your school board votes, because they're not falling underneath Democrat or Republican. That's not how they're determined.
Right, yep. Absolutely.
So you need to make sure.
Yes.
Um. The school board uh appoints the superintendent, correct?
Yes.
So the current school board appointed the current superintendent. Am I correct in saying that? Okay, I just wanted to make sure we were clear with that.
That is correct.
I just wanted to make sure the audience was clear with that.
One thing the board does not do, the board not, does not determine teacher salaries.
Come on.
And I'm just being very transparent because some people have said, oh, hey, I don't think it's right that you should vote for your husband's salary or that you should determine it. I don't determine it. Teachers' union.
I bet your husband wishes he could vote for a salary.
Well, you know. Anyone who knows people will tell you, I don't back him a whole lot. So that's not true. I back you one hundred percent.
Yeah, but but vote straight ticket, you can still scroll down and get the school board correct.
Yeah. And I think that's a good point. I mean, we do have, I have other relatives that work in the district. And if there are items that we need to vote on, you can abstain.
Right.
Yes.
Um, I think historically, usually school board member, because it is the largest employer in our city, in our town. You've got people that you.
You're gonna run into that.
You're going to. And I think historically, a lot of school board members usually have a spouse or someone that works for the district. That's just a small town.
That's right.
It's just the way it is. And if there was a conflict there, I would completely abstain.
Right.
I think we would all, I think we'd agree to that.
I know we would all do that. That's the right thing to do.
I believe that. And I I've seen it on the council, seen it on the city and the county council where things have come up where it's conflict of interest, so to speak, and and that's they abstain from voting.
That's same.
Yeah. Guys, I've enjoyed it. I I didn't know how it would go. I'm not a big education guy. I try to, I I know that sounds ridiculous. I try to stay away from it, um, because it's it's a very fiery topic. It's almost as, I'll stick to arguing with Trump and things like that with liberals. But I mean, maybe this is even more so, and it's so local, that it there's some things that.
This directly impacts.
Yes, and there's some things that I cannot bring out that it just fires me up. So I gotta stay away from it. And, um, I know there's a lot of people.
We're fired up. We're ready.
Take her phone, computer away. She didn't put the way you all have my vote, Kevin.
Yes, that's true. I was still working. That's true. And and I promise you, if I'm on the board, I promise I will still continue to do that, all of us. You know, I think we don't sleep much. Don't sleep a whole lot. So.
Well, ladies and and gentlemen, thank you so much. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Once an Artesian, always an Artesian. True story. Come home to Martinsville. I like that 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 feeling, um, especially with with three faces familiarity on the board. And deep ties and deep roots to the to the school board. And I think it'll it'll go well.
Thank you.
And just just remember, the school board appoints the superintendent. The current superintendent was appointed by the current school board. No, I just, I just want to drive that home because that gets asked a lot.
It does. And I think it's just educating because.
He is appointed by the school board, which you vote for, the school board.
Right. Right.
Bring those Artesians back home. Exactly. All right. Any other questions? Thank you, Dan. Thank you, Julie, Tanya. Thank you to everybody tonight. It was a great crowd. I hate to end it. Um, we could start talking aliens and Bigfoot next if you want.
I live with Bigfoot. I don't know.
Karen, good night. I think the first show tonight in the new city, it's very comfortable in here. I was worried about you being cold.
Oh, no, it's great.
Okay.
No, it's really nice.
Yeah.
Um, Joe and his crew did a hell of a job on this. And it's just, it's, it's very comfortable in here. They they've done a lot of hard work. Joe, and they, these guys do their normal stuff. Then they come in here in the evenings. There was a gentleman in here until ten thirty one night, a couple nights in a row, steaming on the lights. And I I cannot tell you how much I appreciate that. And then. Yeah, they still got a few things left. You guys can see, but I mean, ninety-nine percent of the way through and I and I appreciate it. So. It does smell good. I know. That's why. I'm a tart guy. I like tarts. I'd have one of them in every room. The pumpkin and the, uh, anything pumpkiny and, uh, apple and then, of course, sugar cookies and stuff like that. No, the Christmas stuff.
Oh, yes.
Christmas cookies and things like that. Just the smell is just, I love that.
I eat them.
I'm gonna joke around with you for a second too. I know that you lost a bet Friday. And so this will probably be the only show that's here for another month. We're gonna have some difficulties, aren't we?
Okay. We've we've figured out with the with the new stuff, we we figured out some things here and, um, but this is, I'm gonna get y'all back here by the boss. I I on my own money, I took and purchased, I wanted new TVs, a new setup. So I buy a Monster and two Media Monsters, all the same brand. So guess what? When I go, hey, I'm gonna turn on the big one. I'm gonna change the channel. She's like, Kevin, take both those back and get a Samsung. And I'm like, no, we'll figure it out. So here's what we were trying to do. Not Corneille has it set up. We can punch up any image we want on there and and mirror it up there.
Okay.
So we took from his, the individual's Facebook page, he had put, we win, MHS rules football. So we took that image and put it on his phone and shot it up there and we're setting it up there. But the whole time we're like, click off. I'm like, we can't do that. So. We figured it out where he would literally have to have his phone on the entire time, but it would sit there. But we can do that. So I may appease him. Right. I I know. But I was like, I told him, I'm not putting Moore's flag up when I got three representatives of Martinsville school board in here tonight. I don't blame you. I'd have walked out with you. It'd have been the Cory show. Anyway.
Thank you, Becky.
Some of the responses tonight has just been awesome. So.
Again, this is kind of what I was talking about. You know, sometimes you get kind of down and stressed and so.
Yeah, there's a lot of positivity.
Very positive.
Very kind and appreciated.
I think a lot of people are ready for a change in this community, uh, on the school board and, um, very interesting, informative program, great job. And and that guy right there is is the best.
He's the best. He is the best. I can't help it if he is my father-in-law. He's the best.
I said last night, he can make Long Division sound good. You know what I mean? He's just that. He's just that good.
As gifted as he and my husband both are, my husband will never hold a candle to him.
Yeah. Yeah. And and it's not knocking Junior.
No, he's that good.
Phil Senior is is an exceptional.
He's just gifted. He is gifted.
Two years ago, he came in and read the declaration on during the Fourth of July for us. And we did an early show. It was like noon on the day of the fourth. And he came in and read it and just, I'm, he's there and I'm here and I'm cold chills just running down my arm. I was like, that guy is just solid.
Very gifted.
I hate to end it, but we're we're gonna have to. So.
Heather and I have laundry. I don't know about Matt, but.
I I actually do have laundry. So actually, I asked off Cory. Uh, and and he come in here early today and was cleaning up and I was trying to buy blinds that fit and we just, it's. We we put some effort in this, but thank you to my crew. Thank you to the people that, um, on Joe's crew, JTH Construction. Thank you to the three, hopefully soon to be school board members of Martinsville District School, School Board members of Martinsville Metropolitan School District Martinsville. I have to go back to school and get that one out. So and thank you to the audience tonight. Ninety, almost ninety people for almost an hour. It was right there in the eighties the entire time. So.
Did we?
That's awesome.
We didn't hit six hundred and seventy like we did. Anyway, we'll get to that. That was at, that was at a sectional game at Bloomington a few years ago. Anything to add, CB? Great night. We got a little camera issue. We'll figure out. So. Yeah. We'll make it work.
Well, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Guys.
Thank you all. Good night.
Tomorrow is Monday. Gotta make a great Monday. Look at the positives coming our way. Get out there and vote. There are no voting tomorrow. Starting Tuesday, early voting again, right here in town at the admin building. You may even see some of these smiling faces there.
You'll see me next week.
There you go. Love you guys. Guys, have a great night and we will, uh, get to where, see you soon.
Yes.
I need a fall break. Mics are hot, cameras are dead. So you can't be yelling and screaming at me yet, Jackie. So you gotta wait.
Thank you, Brett, Meredith.
Thank you, Julie. God bless you, Mike. A good show. Good show. We we talked it up here at the end and still let them hear us, but we we just tell them, love you, and we'll see you guys later this week.